Let's get this council session going. Rule call. Ames.
Here.
Bonner.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Pearl.
Here.
Sybil.
Here.
Tatman.
Here.
Tratchell.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
The pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure that all council members have received a copy of the minutes. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
This is Gray. Rule call. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
Reports of committees. Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. The H.R. Committee has met, and in fact, met this evening, to address outstanding legislation as well as current legislation. We decided with assignment 1385, which was tabled in September. It was voted out of committee. 13-113, which we presented this evening, was ratified by the committee as amended. 13-127 was voted out of committee this evening, and 13-133, which is the labor position, which is on tonight's agenda, was ratified as amended by the committee. There are then two items on this evening's agenda. Item number four, which is to appropriate $4,500 to cover the salary costs for a full-time general laborist position within the refuse department for the remainder of 2013. And item number five, to amend section 123.072 of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe titled Transit Department Personnel. This last is in reference to the contract that we have with MRDD, Ross County, to be able to bring onboard the transit department drivers. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Mr. Sybil.
Thank you. Finance Committee has one item on the agenda, item number two, and this is to transfer funds to cover our electric expenses, streets and sidewalks specifically. We're going to just do a transfer of $23,500 from refuse disposal tip fees. We believe we have a little bit over budget in there to help cover the streets and sidewalks electric. Just want to reference, I guess, item number four, the $4,500. Being that we're moving money out of refuse for tip fees, either way you do it, we're going to spend $4,500 on the general fund, so I don't want that to impact any decisions we make here this evening. You could have covered the refuse salary with the refuse tip fees. Either way you want to do it, it nets out to be the same thing, $4,500 for the general fund, but I didn't want that to factor in. That was just for the sake of administrative purposes. I think we was trying to get this thing through with transferring from the tip fees over to the electric, so just wanted to bring that to note and let you know that I do full support bringing the full-time general labor position back for this year and even next year. That's all we have for the Finance Committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sybil. Mrs. Gray, did you want to add something?
Yes, I apologize. For the item number four, there was a question with regard to the way the legislation was presented and changed, and I will defer to Mrs. Karen Hoffman to clarify, and then ask Law Director Rutherford if she could assist us with regard to the previous ordinance as well as the amendment with respect to the part-time bus operator shall be non-classified and shall be entitled to only those benefits as required by law. And then the amendment which states or continues to state that the part-time bus operators shall be non-classified and shall be entitled to only those benefits as required by law. Mrs. Hoffman, would you be able to clarify, please?
Our question simply was, the earlier language does refer to a time before they were bargaining unit members, and I mean the part-timers. I think perhaps once they became bargaining unit, even though they're still part-timers, should it not have said classified?
Our request was to amend the ordinance that had the part-time bus drivers from, I believe, nine to six fifteen.
Right.
As far as whether or not those people were classified or non-bargaining, that was never part of their request, and so because it was part of the previous ordinance, we didn't amend that.
Right. I... Tammy Lowe's saying that the part-time bus drivers were already classified. I know it's old language, but I do think by virtue of the fact that they are now recognized as bargaining unit members, I think probably it just concerns me that it, because it does allude to the fact that in the paragraph just above the 15 part-time, I think it perhaps should say the above, full-time and part-time positions are then the classified civil service. And it does go on to say part-time bus operators shall be paid at an hourly rate as approved by council, and there's actually an hourly rate as assigned by their contracts. I mean, I don't think it'd be the...
So what you're saying in that, in between the old language that is in the first part of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, and the second part of the ordinance, there has been an action that has taken place that's not reflected in the previous, in the current language?
Yes, I just saw this for the first time tonight, but I think that's what's happened, that earlier this year when they became certified as bargaining unit members within ASME 1562, probably that status then changed, but I...
Was that an oversight that we should have corrected even prior to this evening's?
Probably, but I never really thought about it, and actually Andy was the one who was looking at that and picked up on that, but probably, probably that should have been amended when they became bargaining unit, but I wouldn't have thought of that, because I don't know that I've ever seen the ordinance before, so...
So how would we handle that this evening?
I think you're going to have to withdraw this and redraft it.
Okay, and could we possibly have it for, if we have it, is it a special session or a review session?
It's a review session.
So it's not a special session?
Do we not read?
Just ask, request not to read then.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Gray not to read, seconded by Mr. Sybil. Just a second. Okay.
Just as a suggestion, it could be left on tonight in no waiver of the three reading rule. Then it goes to second reading. I say that only because an amendment can cause it to go back to first reading, or at the chair's ruling, it can stay at second reading so that, you know...
We can move forward with it.
Yeah.
Well, we keep it at first reading, and we'll work on the language for amendment.
Yeah, just amend it in the meantime. Let it keep going.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Motion to throw. Had not amended by the next council session.
Yes, sir. And there was also a question, Mayor. Mayor, you had mentioned during the Finance Committee meeting with respect to classified versus non-classified. Was that the refuse, the laborist position?
Yes.
And what, is that language that also needs to be...
They will, they will be bargaining unit positions.
So the language on that needs to be changed as well?
Needs to be changed as well. That's why I brought that up during the H.R. Committee.
Okay, so then what we will not do then, because I was going to request to waive the three-read rule on it as well this evening, we'll keep it at first reading, make an amendment to that as well for the next council meeting. Keep them at first, both first reading.
I have adequate budget to accommodate that, and the refuge and the auto driver are talking about what we need to do for the bus drivers.
Okay, so then what we will do then is for both of those pieces of legislation, keep them at first reading this evening, and get the amendments for both pieces of ordinance, or pieces of legislation for the next regular council meetings.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is very important. Thank you.
Anyone else have any legislation? Mr. Pearl?
Yes, Safety Service Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's a second reading, and this is to amend chapter 1501 dot 01 of the Codified Ordinance of Chillicothe pertaining to the enforcement of fire codes, and this will stay at the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Mrs. Neal?
Community Affairs has no items on the agenda tonight, but I'd like to report on assignment 13-56, which was livestock in the city. And I've been in contact with Chris Brunus. He solicited some of his colleagues for best practices. We reviewed those and decided that they were all too prohibitive for Chillicothe, which is an agricultural-based community. There are 84 4-H livestock projects in the city in 2013. Those are all registered with the Ohio Extension Office, and they oversee those projects. They have classes that the 4-Hers are required to complete and attend about animal care. Mr. Brunus has offered to intervene when we have any reports of problems and provide education and guidance for people that are having problems being good neighbors with their animals. There's also legislation already in the Ohio Revised Code that helps set some guidelines for the animals that are allowed in the city. So at this time, I'd like to take this assignment out of committee. If we have problems that arise later, we'll take a look at it again, but right now, the committee feels like there's no legislation required, and we'd like to take the assignment out of committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Bring us the Parks and Rec. There's one item on the agenda tonight. It's first reading to appropriate $5,500 to the Parks and Rec Department to cover outstanding invoices to the Transit Department for work done on park equipment. I'm not sure, do we need to pass this tonight? Or is there another fund we can get this money out of to pay for this?
This is the only fund that we can pay for this from, and frankly, for its transit sake, it would be good to pass to that.
Yes. We've been kicking this around for several months.
Yeah.
So that concludes my report, and at the appropriate time, I would request that we wait the three-read rule and get this passed. Anyone else? That brings us to reports of officials. Mayor Iverson.
Thank you, Protem Tratchell. Due to the length of the budget, and that's because of the fact that's all I've been wrapped up in the last few weeks, the only report I have is that I would like to give mention of thanks to the insurance committee made up by the community, the union leadership for working with us to get an agreement with the insurance coverage going forward. I think they represented their constituents well, and worked in the best interest of the city to get the best deal possible that we can get, and I thank you for that work. The only other thing I have is wish all the citizens a Happy Thanksgiving and be safe. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Iverson. Auditor Feeney.
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. Couple things to touch on. As of tonight, the bond issues have been signed. Council Clerk Foston signed the last documents tomorrow morning, probably tonight. I'll scan them and email them, and they'll be mailed tomorrow, and that will put that issue to rest. We've been talking about that just about all year, and I really want to thank council and everybody for their attention to that matter, which was a fairly complicated matter. It's going to put a little bit of pressure on some of the city departments to make some payments that we otherwise might not have made, some interest-only payments that we saw this year, but in the long run, maybe not even the long run, I suspect within the next year or two, we'll see a bounce in interest rates, and at that time, we're going to be looking at the interest rates that we've secured and be, I think we'll be very happy about what we locked in. You look at the size of some of that debt, municipal court being one of the bigger issues, and being able to lock in interest rates over a period longer than 20 years, both that and transit, you know, 10, 20 years from now, they're going to look back, I think, and say, and they did a good job of locking those rates in. So kudos to everybody in this room for their attention to detail in that matter and getting that accomplished this year. I was late to the Finance Committee meeting because I was in Athens for a press conference on the tax reform bill. If you'll recall, this body passed a resolution earlier this year, essentially in opposition to that tax reform bill as it was presently stated. I think we all agree, and businesses in particular, CPAs, accounts, everybody in Ohio can probably on a general basis agree that tax reform is needed. Ohio has one of the most complicated state tax, municipal tax setups in the country. Uniformity is needed. That being said, since that resolution was passed by this body, the legislation that was passed and has now gone to the Senate actually got worse. There are a few areas, and one of the most significant for the city of Chillicothe is what's called the net operating loss carryforward. City of Chillicothe does not have, it's a zero net operating loss, and without belaboring the point, if this is to pass in the Senate, it is a bad thing for the city of Chillicothe. And so I would encourage, we've already passed a resolution that we imposed, opposed the legislation in a kinder, gentler form, so I think we need to continue to voice our opposition. You know, on its own, it might not be so bad, but it's hard for me to look at this legislation in isolation. This is, I think, when we started the budget conversation earlier this year, I think I said, well, the good news is the hits, the cuts from the state have stopped. Well, since then, this was slipped into the legislation, and it would essentially be another cut for the city of Chillicothe between the net operating loss and a couple other items that have been slipped in, and it'd probably be in excess of $100,000, which isn't so bad on its own, but you take out the estate tax, you take out the local government funds, tangible personal property, all of a sudden, you're well over $1 million in cuts. So the aggregate is very, very bad. So it's in the Senate now. I believe Bob Peterson is this area's senator, and that would be the person to voice your opinion on this matter, too, and that's what I'll be doing. And just lastly, on some of those issues that have already been mentioned tonight in committee, parks money and Finance Committee money, I would also support passage tonight and waiver on the three-read rule. Thank you, President Protem.
Thank you, Attorney Feeney. Law Director, Mrs. Rutherford.
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. Quite a title there.
Yes.
The Law Director's Office is currently reviewing legislation relating to pawn shops and secondhand dealers, and we're getting very close to having a draft of that ready to send back to the committee. And the Law Director's Office has provided numerous legal opinions to law enforcement and city officials over the last period of time. In addition to the prosecution of criminal traffic cases in Chillicothe Municipal Court, the Law Director's Office is involved in a wide variety of legal matters that involve the city. During the past few weeks, we filed property code violations in the city municipal court, we filed proof of claim forms in bankruptcy cases, relaying the cases in which the city has owed money because of taxes and whatnot. We are also preparing and appealing several cases to the fourth district court of appeal. That concludes my report. Thank you, President Protem Tratchell.
Thank you, Mrs. Rutherford. The president of council has nothing to report, and that which brings us to audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak needs to step to the microphone and give your name, address. Council Rule 21 permits each speaker to five minutes and each subject to 15. Anyone? Thank you. That brings us to old business.
Thank you.
Mr. Sybil.
Since we're being recorded, and for the record, I'd like to note, it's probably 53 degrees, and it might be the coldest council meeting I think we've ever had on the record, so we probably should make that note.
Contrary to the hot air...
That's old business? Yes.
Do you want to pitch your chair?
Yeah.
No, no. He said old business, not cold business.
It's cold business, yes. But on a more important note, just like to make a motion to excuse Ms. Patrick this evening.
Ms. Perrine, yeah.
And Ms. Perrine, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
Do both?
Motion by, you don't need to excuse the president, we do, you need to excuse Mrs. Patrick.
Okay.
Motion by, Mr. Sybil, seconded by Mrs. Gray. Rule call. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And it passes. Petitions and correspondence, Mr. clerk? I have none to report on Mr. President Protem. Thank you, sir. New business, please. Mrs. Ames.
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. I made this announcement during the finance meeting, but I need to make this again while we're on camera and that we have people watching. Myself, Mrs. Patrick, and Mr. Tratchell have called a review session for next Monday, December 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. here in Council Chambers. I will come turn the heat on early in the day. The Hopewell Culture National Historic Park has been nominated for a World Heritage Designation. This process began in 2008 and is expected to be culminated in 2016. Hopewell Culture Park is one of the 15 locations throughout the world that was nominated. Two nominations have been removed from the competition thus far. Recently, a World Heritage Panel visited Chillicothe to see the site. In the past three months, I've attended two different presentations about the uniqueness and importance of the site in our own backyard. To say that I was amazed would be an understatement. If granted this designation, the impact on business and tourism in Chillicothe would be enormous. Also, the designation would require supporting improvements from the city on things like infrastructure and utilities. I have asked Mr. Bruce Lombardo, Director of Heartland Earthworks Conservancy, and Dr. Brett Ruby, archaeologist and chief of resource management at Hopewell, to give an hour presentation about the impact of this designation. The public is encouraged to attend this interesting meeting, and that will be next Monday, December 2nd, at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Second announcement I have is from the Parks and Rec Department. They have announced the annual holiday decorating contest will be held. There would be two divisions, home decorating and business window decorating. You may enter your home or business by sending a postcard with your name, address, and phone number to the Parks and Rec Department, 35 South Paint Street, Chillicothe, Ohio. You may also drop off your entry postcard to the Service Department office at 35 South Paint Street. All entries must be received by the Parks and Rec Director, Mike Green, by Thursday, December 5th, at 4:30 p.m. Judging will take place on Friday, December 6th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. This year, we have some very nice prizes that we're awarding and promotion, we're publicizing, promoting our pool and parks. First prize for each division will be one free park shelter rental. Second place in each division will receive six one-day individual pool passes, and third place in each division will receive four one-day individual pool passes. Transit Director Melissa Givens has announced that the Transit Department will be having the holiday bus tours to see the winners and the other entrants on December 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th at 6:00 and 7:30 p.m. each night, and tickets are going to be available for $1 at the Transit Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ames. Mrs. Gray.
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. Chillicothe City Schools will be sponsoring a community event, 6:30, in the CHS auditorium in collaboration with Rachel's Challenge. Each day, 160,000 students do not go to school because they are bullied, teased, and harassed. By turning the story of a tragic death at Columbine High School into a mission for change, Rachel's Challenge is helping create safer learning environments and making a worldwide impact. Rachel's Challenge is a series of student-empowering programs and strategies that equip students and adults to combat bullying and allay feelings of isolation and despair by creating a culture of kindness and compassion. The programs are based on the writings and life of 17-year-old Rachel Scott, who was the first student killed at Columbine High School in 1999. Rachel left a legacy of reaching out to those students who are different, who were picked on by others, or who were new at the school. Shortly before her death, she wrote, "I have this theory that if one person can go out of their way to show compassion, then it will start a chain reaction of the same. People will never know how far a little kindness can go." Rachel's Challenge was started by Rachel's dad and stepmom, Daryl and Sandy Scott, when they realized that the writings and drawings of Rachel left not only an impact on her friends and classmates, but also resonated with students around the world. Although Rachel was a typical teenager who even wrote about her ups and downs, she had a passion and conviction that she would someday change the world. The Scott family knew her story and passion and had to behold to inspire others to make the world a better place. The event that will be held this eve, I'm sorry, tomorrow evening, will be a culminating event that Chillicothe City Schools has been working on for the past few weeks with the middle school as well as the high school, and the program tomorrow evening is a community event. We're asking everyone to come out and celebrate this particular empowering event for students. Again, it's a culminating event that the high school as well as the middle school has been working on for the past few weeks. Please come out and support. It's 6:30 tomorrow evening at the Chillicothe High School Auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Anyone else? Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Protem Tratchell. Yes, the City Service Committee will have a meeting Wednesday at 3 o'clock at 35 South Paint in the conference room. We'll discuss the legislation for a payment of $17,000 to the PANDA Environment Group for landfill inspection performed on the city's behalf, and look at the whole landfill situation, and discuss any other pending legislation that we may want to wrap up or put out of committee before the end of the year. Does anyone have a report?
What time is that, 3?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 3 o'clock. I'm sorry, 3 o'clock Wednesday.
City Services.
City Service.
Okay. Anyone else? New business? Okay, that brings us to committee assignments and meeting dates. I have one committee assignment. That's assignment 13-140. It's Finance Committee, a request for legislation to appropriate $24,000 to pay electric bill costs for streetlights for the remainder of 2013. And that completes what I have. The only meeting date that I'm aware of is Mr. Bonner's 3 o'clock City Services meeting, and tomorrow night, CHS. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. Bring us to legislation. Item one.
Second reading of an ordinance amending chapter 1501.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Item two.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds to cover electric expenses for streetlights and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Sybil.
Make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
Seconded by Mrs. Gray. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Rule call on the ordinance. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And that motion passes. That ordinance passes. Item four. Not read. That's what we planned on reading. Oh, we are reading it. I'm sorry. I confused myself. First reading of an ordinance appropriating $4,500 to the city Parks Department to cover outstanding invoices due to the city Transit Department for work done on Parks Department equipment and declaring an emergency. First reading. For reasons stated in my report, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule. Seconded by Mr. Sybil. Rule call on the motion. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Rule call on the...
Did you say no?
That's easy for me to...
That's the first.
Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
Tratchell.
Yes.
And that motion passes. That ordinance passes. Item four. Not read. That's what we planned on reading.
Oh, we are reading, I'm sorry. I confused myself. First reading of an ordinance appropriating forty-five hundred dollars to cover the salary costs for a full-time general laborer position within the Refuge Department for the remainder of twenty thirteen and declaring an emergency. First reading. Item five. First reading of an ordinance amending section one twenty-three point zero seven two of the codified ordinances of the city of Chillicothe titled Transit Department Personnel and Declaring Emergency. First reading.
We have a motion for adjournment. Mr. Sybil, seconded by Mrs. Ames. Ames.
Yes.
Bonner.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Sybil.
Yes.
Tatman.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.